Good morning. Tonight's work session is a presentation of the budget concepts for the first round of pedestrian safety projects in downtown Fairhope. A spoke talk.
So, we did what Richard and I were referring to as our speed presenting the last work session on this, so we really didn't need to get too in the weeds on this project because you all already saw it at the last council meeting. I will say, as a follow-up, I know there have been some articles written about it, and we've had some questions at the city about people's concerns about cobbles and, you know, is it going to be hard to walk on and that sort of thing, and we've corrected some of that and put out some more information about what we're talking about exactly. Just to clarify, we're not talking about putting cobbles in areas where people are walking, and we're not even really sure that the cobble strip is going to be approved in the final budget. So, it's proposed, and it was part of this study that was recommended. But the one thing we did want to talk about is, we wanted to jump on putting the parking, public parking signs up right away. I know it's been something we've been talking about. We don't want it to be held up anymore by the citywide wayfinding implementation. So, we have two examples up that we just wanted to show you. We've gone through a ton of different examples. Something really simple either this one, and I think Jeff has control there. Jeff, can you move it to the next one? So, look up at the screen or in this one. So, these were our two winners. The first one is a banner, a pole banner, so it's easy to print. It's something we can use now until, you know, if the wayfinding comes out with something different, we can change it then. But at least we can get something out there. This one, as you can see, is more of a, you know, wayfinding type sign, but it's strictly for parking purposes, and it would have an arrow. We want a directional arrow. The other thing is, we've been contacted by the Eastern Shore Art Center about doing some creative placemaking, public art, to guide people to parking. They're really excited about doing something. They've talked with the state Main Street Director, who wants to talk to the city about it, so I'm not sure what that looks like. They want to do it on the ground. I didn't want to go into too much detail because our kickoff meeting is tomorrow, and we haven't talked to the property owner, but we are thinking about maybe a directional mural or some kind of fun mural to guide people on the side of one of the buildings there to catch people's attention to the parking garage. But that's private property, so it's not a decision we would make. I just wanted to let you know that that was happening. That was something we've been contacted about.
And we will, one of the things, and y'all let us kind of nudge you, last, two weeks ago, and we've kind of got that scope narrowed down. One of the things that they are, is the deliverables is an estimate of probable construction cost, so when we have that put together, we'll definitely bring that back to you. Another thing is maybe for a part of this concept of trying to tighten up the directional information about where the public parking is, is I think one of y'all may have mentioned it as a concept, doing thermoplast markings actually on the driving pavement that says "public parking" with a, an arrow directing you into it in both directions.
We've asked y'all to do that for a year.
And that's inexpensive, and it's one of those things that's easy to do.
What's it got to take to get it done?
We've got to get a stencil made, and that's it. So, I'll get to work on it right away. How about that?
Do y'all need a resolution or anything like that?
No, that's, we have paint markings in our, in our normal maintenance budget, so.
Awesome.
All right.
And that will be, I mean, we want to direct people to all public parking, not just the garage. I mean, we have other public parking around the city that people don't easily find, and unfortunately, it's just taken us longer than we had hoped for the wayfinding citywide to get that done. So, we don't want this part to wait any longer, and we've heard that from quite a number of people here, and, yeah.
Anything else on that?
I think that's it. We're moving forward. We'll have the budget, like Richard said, in front of y'all soon. We met with the engineers, and we're working on it.
Can I ask another question while I've got you here, real kind of on that subject, Richard? The stoplight at Valanta, I've been harping on it for years, and I think we had bought a loop detector, and it is, I mean, it doesn't matter if it's 5:00 AM, there's six cars on Section Street going anywhere, and there's nobody on Valanta, and it is, it just seems to congest things in the city, and it doesn't, and the traffic just needs to flow through there. There needs to be a, you know, some kind of weight there for the people that are coming in from Valanta. I mean, I counted the other day seventeen cars going north backed up at the light. Nobody on, nobody on Valanta, seventeen.
So, the suspicion is that it's just on a fixed dumb cycle?
Yeah, it's just a timer.
So, there's no loops or control.
We bought two loop detectors, one for there and one for Gayfer, you know, quite some time ago, and then they haven't been, I mean, it's like three years ago.
And this is on Section?
This Section of Valanta.
I hear about this a lot from.
And apparently, if you want to know when the red's on Valanta, follow Jack.
He'll be on the phone with me, then you'll know.
Well, I will get with Mr. Allison and.
He hits it every time.
I have that conversation with my husband.
Every time. There is no such thing as a green light there.
Yeah.
I think it stays green on a Valanta, and it turns when you pull up there on Section. I don't know. Maybe they put the loop detector on the road.
I'll find out about that.
I didn't know y'all didn't do it.
Is there anything else we wanted to? We're kicking off the alleyway project meeting, the parking garage, tomorrow morning, like I said, which is really exciting.
Sherri Lee, what, how do we spend on the funding from the MPO on that? Are they waiting on us, or are we waiting on them for funding?
No, we, we are, we got released. We got the, then, there were several things that had to be done that just took, took time. One was the, there was a lease respect that had to be through single tax and the Park Authority. That got done. They approved our professional service agreement, and that all got signed, and that is done, so we were able to tell the professional services to get going. So, we're, we're going now. The money is released, and as soon as we get an invoice in, and then as soon as that check clears, when we pay it, then we can submit for our reimbursement on it.
Is it eighty percent?
Yes.
It's just really going to be a great project.
It is.
What's going on with the Bratz Hub there? Is that?
That's, that's all part of this. And, and we're officially moving, meaning that, that, that we are spending money on this project now.
So, we can tell citizens it'll be completed when?
Well, we'll have design, our first run on the design concept on March 24th, so we'll release that. You know, it'll be very preliminary. Tomorrow is just a stakeholder meeting with property owners, and, you know, Jimmy, I know your bank is, backs up the Chamber.
More importantly than us, is Charlie Bassett involved in the conversation?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Parking Authority is very involved. A member of the Parking Authority and the Downtown Fairhope Business Association Board Chair is on the committee, so we've tried to get everyone that represents a major stakeholder involved.
Jimmy, do you have any kind of feel for the merchants along there? How resistant are they going to be to clean up? You know, they still have garbage cans and whatnot, and so there's, there's a, you know, you've got to pretty that up and.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that if you, if you cleaned it up, there might be more initiative to keep it looking nice. I haven't had anybody mention one way or the other that they were, you know, opposed to. They would like to see the alley cleaned up, but I haven't heard anyone say.
To me, if you're, if you're making it more attractive and you're attracting people to that parking deck, they're just adjacent to those people's businesses, and they're very, I don't know if that would help, but.
Peer pressure.
And that is, the scope of work does allow this dollar to affect the whole area, so, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, and it's going to be acceptance of business, is designing garbage corrals, so that they are something that hide the unattractive part of it, but is serviceable. We've even talked about.
Do you look at that as that part of your wheelhouse as well to make, I was just thinking that, to make it serviceable?
Yes.
I mean, public works is involved.
Absolutely.
So, you know how to, you can't make it so pretty that the truck can't get to garbage.
Or make it so difficult for the, for the garbage operator to get it in and out of the containment area. It's got to be functional and usable.
We've spent more time looking at garbage.
And I keep forgetting which building. One of the buildings has the biggest transformer that's just squared up right in the center of it. How, you know, we've talked about how can we make that transformer, it may be yours. And it's just, I mean, I know to Mike and Richard Peterson, a transformer is a thing of beauty, but right there on the edge of the alley, it's just not attractive. I'm just telling you. And so, those are the challenges we're looking at. How can we soften that, but still make it where they can service it and everything else? So, you know, this is, the big goal is aesthetics and functionality and meeting that, so I'm excited about it.
Yeah, put art on it, Lisa said. It's a fine line. I mean, we want a lot of art, but at the same time, it can get, you know, kind of schizophrenic with a ton of art out there.
And down at North Beach, if you didn't notice, we painted that one a color that was a lot more complementary, and it's made that great big transformer almost disappear into the scenery. So, sometimes just a color change can make a big difference, so.
Jeff, can you go back to that other slide? Did y'all have any feelings about this? Nope, not that one. The parking, one and two. So, you see that, that's the banner, pole banner, with just an arrow. I mean, it's simple, but it does the job.
Yeah.
We looked at a lot of.
Like you said, inexpensive. See if it works, and if something else comes about with the wayfinding, then so be it.
Updated then.
Obviously, I think we all want to minimize the number of poles. I know it's unnecessary, but keep it to a minimum. Banner accomplishes that.
I think there's, there are a couple of poles near the entries, so we've looked at that. We can just use those.
Speaking of signage in North Beach, you might, you might need to get no driving on beach sides. I drove through there yesterday, and some guy from out of town had attempted to drive out on the beach.
And that happened about ten days ago, too. Somebody went out and got stuck on the beach, so, okay.
Is that allowed?
I would think that would be obvious, but, okay.
I'm kidding. If I had known.
I will look into that.
I mean, it's always something people need.
You can't sign everything.
No, I was about to say.
So, you'll bring some budget numbers to us right at the next meeting, Ben, or a couple of meetings from now?
Yeah, he should, he should be to the point where he should be able to start at least giving us some probable cost estimates there, so for each of those projects that we introduce to you. So, I will make that a goal, to get that as soon as possible, too.
Right. Sherri Lee, I've got you on the next item.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, the cattail, yes, and there's a picture of that as well.
Yeah, so, next item on tonight's work session will be the consideration of some gifts that have been offered to the City of Fairhope. We just have to receive these. There's a cattail pond sculpture from Constance Lewis.
Jeff, can you pull up the cattail? I sent him the slide. There we go. It says thirty inches, but it's actually thirty feet.
Is that a rocket in the back?
By fifteen. It looks like a nuclear.
Special old solid rocket booster.
I don't know where this artist works, but, so, yes, this is the sculpture. It was actually purchased by someone in Atlanta from an artist, the artist that, that did the sculpture in front of the library. She also did the sculpture by, behind the Daphne Civic Center. Everyone thinks it's a dreidel, but it's not. I'm not sure. I think it's some sort of top, but it's not a dreidel. Anyway, this, this artist is very, very well-known, and the person that purchased it wanted to donate it to the City of Fairhope, so it's coming actually not from the artist, but from the donor, an individual. And it is, it is quite large. We've already engaged COPA. They've been looking at this and recommending places it could go. I had a conversation.
Is there a roundabout there? One of the roundabouts?
So, one of the roundabouts, actually, our Public Works Director brought that up today.
It's a good traffic call to watch, too.
Yeah, at the roundabout that already exists.
You've got new structures.
Exactly. So, I've sent that recommendation to COPA, and I'm waiting. One of the COPA members said, absolutely, one of the concerns was if we put it somewhere on the waterfront, we had discussed maybe Fairhope docks and making it a water feature even, that someone could, could fall in it, or it could cause more, it could be dangerous, I guess. That was, yeah, that was something brought up, too, like we already have one. But these are, concerns were brought up about different things. I like the idea of the roundabout, but.
Not that it matters. Is there a hole in the middle of it, or is it supposed to hold water?
There is not a hole in the middle of it.
Is it supposed to hold water?
Um.
Obviously, it will.
It could.
It could be a mosquito trap.
So, we might have to, we'll have to.
Should it be a whole implement in the middle?
I'll refer to Public Works to help.
Painted steel, so.
Well, the stainless steel cattails. The base is painted steel.
Right, but that's what I'm saying.
It's probably. Not in your lifetime.
Just saying. Looks like a good fire pit with that ring around.
A good, a fire pit. Maybe the person that drove on the beach can ask that out.
Again, it's just a question.
Yeah, I mean, those are all things to consider.
It certainly wouldn't stop us from taking it, because it's a beautiful piece of work.
Does anybody have any problem with us accepting that? Especially if we put that on the next meeting.
You have a problem?
You have a problem with that?
We can't have that.
Okay.
That would be great.
All right, and then the next item that has, that's been requested to be accepted by the city are three parcels of land.
That's right.
And should have a plat of these. Councilman Brown, you in walked the property?
I did a drive-by inspection.
I spoke with the.
It's in a go.
It's in a Riverine, yeah, and I spoke with the trustee who is managing the estate. I think she's a family member, but they're looking for, they're looking for some sort of tax deduction as part of it. Now, the, the value has declined because it's unbuildable now, so we're investigating, or they're investigating with their tax people whether or not, you know, what the value would be. From our end, and if the city accepts it, I'm not sure, I don't think we can provide tax documentation for taking and donated property. I don't know that we have a vehicle set up like that, and there's only one land trust that exists in our area, and that's Weeks Bay Foundation. So, they have, this doesn't have to be done until the end of the year, I found out, for their tax purposes. So, we have some time, and I'm just doing some investigating on the types of acceptances we can do as a city. And I don't know historically if y'all have ever accepted land like this before as a donation or conservation.
Yeah.
And provided tax benefits.
Yeah, the, the most recent that I can think of was, you know, when we purchased the Triangle property, we purchased it at four million dollars below appraised value. Think that they used that for a tax deduction.
They did.
So, it was not a giveaway, but it was, was still a, a purchase well below appraised value. I mean, I think that the main thing that we are concerned about is if we take ownership of that, you know, what kind of liabilities come along with that land? You know, is, are they, you know, getting rid of it to avoid some kind of liable situation, and then we, we take it on, and the next thing you know, we're having to buy six lots to the, adjacent to it.
Well, the parents passed away that owned it, and so they left it to, to their, I guess, their daughter, and, I mean, they're unbuildable, and she wanted to donate them. I mean, just to protect the Riverine. She seemed very interested in the environmental community.
Wouldn't it be better to partner with somebody like Weeks Bay?
Right. That's what I was thinking.
Where they can put in a conservation easement, and they, they can get all their documents from, from Weeks Bay.
Yeah, and so I've spoken with EIL, their Executive Director, about this in the past, and I've touched base with her again. I just need to connect with her and do some more research.
Well, we do have a park in that area that's not too far from there, be to the, almost directly to the west.
Another deal is you could.
So, it could, it could be a park.
You could put a retention point.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it sounds like it's right there in the gully, and I'm sure, I just don't want to park right there in the gully.
It's a healthy house. I don't know how much it would help. I mean, that'd be an engineer's design.
Yeah, ain't much to it.
Okay.
And I'll, Richard, have you walked that side?
I'm not familiar with it.
I'll, we'll go out there, too. So, we do have a little time.
But also, something else to consider as well, and this is, you know, it's a thought is, you know, they give it to us, you know, we don't know what to do with it. We're just taking it off their hands, so they get a tax write-off and eliminate the tax burden. It's a loss of property tax revenue. If it's not worth much, that may not be much, but.
Thinking if it's not buildable, its asset value's not going to be.
It's not.
We'll reflect that.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
You know, the one thing about it is.
And they did have the county assess it already.
It's only detrimental during the heavy floods, and it's only during that time. In other words, it, the water floods through within a 24-hour period. Now, it'd be wet, but it's not like it's holding water.
Mm-hmm.
And short of any type of liability that we would have, which I don't think we would. I mean, you know, you get a two or three a year, maybe, but it could be utilized for some type of park or something during the dry times.
And Marcus and I have spoken a little bit about it.
Regional detention pond.
I know, that's why I said.
I was thinking, I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's anything in between there and the bay that, that has a drainage issue. I think it's all in the gully at that point.
Okay.
The only reason I'm sensitive to it is because there is, there are lots that have cost us money.
Upstream.
Very close to that area, as, you know, as you well know, you've lived along that area, a couple of houses, so it's just not too far. That's why it kind of jumps out at me as a concern. Okay, all right, so we're not in a hurry on that?
We're not in a hurry. We'll continue. I'll bring you more information.
Okay.
Is that all on man?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item three is a discussion of bike and pedestrian trails. Robert, you want to start that discussion? Do you have an agenda item on tonight's?
Yeah, what number is that? Nineteen? Yeah, number 27. You know, I presented it last meeting. You know, like I mentioned, I'd met with a group of biking enthusiasts that wanted to put bike trails, and I don't, this wasn't the first time that'd come up, it was just the first time they met with, with the new council. Like I said, it was a couple of years ago. Just trying to utilize that, that northern parcel of the Triangle property. It's, the city owns it. We're not being asked to go out and purchase any land for bike trails. We currently have it. It's low-impact. A couple of the people on the, well, they're not in a committee, but they were just a group of biking enthusiasts, like I said, that they travel around the southeast and even the country, you know, for, for biking trails. And so, I thought it was a, a good, low-impact use, and it could be done relatively inexpensive to put that property use for a certain part of the citizens of Fairhope that don't have the recreational bike trails. So, that's why I presented it.
I kind of want to piggyback on the Roberts discussion, and that is that, you know, just a couple of things. It's, it's not a lot of money for that, for that design to be created. We don't have to build it if we, if we don't like it. The other thing, though, the main thing I want to mention is that while we're doing this, and I know that we, we've talked about having an overall plan for that land, although I think a bike trail would lend itself to being pretty flexible if it didn't fit into the overall plan. It's probably not something that's permanent. You know, we're not laying down asphalt, any type of concrete. It's just a trail through the woods. But what I would like to address is the fact that if we're going to push a bike trail because a group of people came in and said, all right, well, let's do something with it, let's, I think we should pu, push some pedestrian trails as well, because I think if you had 300 mountain bikers in the city, you'd probably be overestimating the number that you have. But we'd probably have 5,000 walkers in the city, so I, if, I don't know if this group can look at pedestrian trails, or somehow, I, I just think the greater use of that is pedestrian trails over, over bike trails. I know we could look at those bike trails for multi, as multi-use trails, but I, I almost feel like I don't want to go a step further.
Yeah, and I.
I think if you ask the people at Polde what they'd rather see, you know, bikes going to, might, you know, I don't think anybody'd have a problem with that necessarily, but I think first and foremost, we have a lot more people that want to walk through there than want to ride a bike through there.
I wouldn't disagree with you, but I'd also say to the point that people that do travel around just regionally, Orange Beach, you know, Auburn area, to get on these mountain bike recreation trails, they would say, there's nothing like this in our city, and we would like to have something. And I would say to the walkers, there's plenty of places you can walk in the city, and you can have both on this 70-acre parcel. You can have walking trails, and you can have biking trails. So, I'm not saying it's just going to be solely biking trails and everybody else stay out. I'm just saying, let's provide this for these biking enthusiasts for this small amount of money and put the parcel to use.
Well, we had two people, two citizens come to us at the last meeting and push for a bike trail. Now, I'm a city council member, and I'm pushing for a pedestrian trail, so I don't want to say it wasn't brought up. I want to push for a pedestrian trail.
I think it's a great idea.
So, what can we do to further that?
Well, you know, Jack, you and I talked last week, Jack, about having a study done for that parcel or getting somebody in there. I think we get some of the local knowledge, you know, there's plenty of foresters, retired, and people that know that property that can walk it and tell you what kind of species of trees are on there that need to be protected. It even says in that Thompson Engineering Report that I referred to on the, on my post about what is on there that, that could be preserved and be a benefit for people biking and walking through that property. So, I think you probably get enough volunteers here locally on how to move forward with it.
Wouldn't they want to weigh in on the bike trail as well, then? I mean, aren't they?
Well, and the reason I'm putting this bike trail is, this company, the International Mountain Biking Association, does, that's their specialty, to maximize the effectiveness of the bike trail, spend this money, and have it done right, so.
I'm not sure if it'll have to be rebid or whatever by the city, kind of like the dredging. I mean, that's something we want to make sure that we're, we get right, but I do want to just, you know, for the record again, I'm definitely for this project, but when we put together the budget, we are only leaving ourselves a $13,000. It's not a profit, but just a balance. So, pretty much anything that we approve right now is going to have to be taken from utilities. And, you know, we are doing an overall, not only comprehensive land use plan, which would tie in all of our assets and land use, but we also are doing a separate study on the prioritizing parks and needs for the community. And I want to do it all, but it does need to fit into a puzzle, so we're not being pulled all these directions, and there is a focused, you know, way to unfold the plan. And I agree, this is not very much to do the plan, but we don't know how much it's going to cost to, to implement it. And the funding sources, which, if you tie me in and Sherri Lee and our grant writer, we can actively look for funding as well, and that would pay for things like this. So, it's just really communication and trying to tie it into the overall big picture, so we're not putting the cart before the horse.
I would say as far as the, the budget goes, you know, there are incomes that we don't, we're not allowed to budget, that we know we're going to make money on things, such as court costs. You can't put that in the budget. So, we've had, I, I mean, I.
But that has to be spent for that, their budget. It has to be, it doesn't go to parks.
I, I don't even know how many untold expenses that we have come up on a moment's notice. Emergency expenditures are here or there that we have to, that we have to spend money for.
I agree, and, and we do know that's going to come.
Not just emergency, just grants that are brought to us that are 80/20 matching, and it's still hundreds of thousands of dollars that we match.
But that's what you consider, of course, before we do it. I mean, it's just all... If we're putting in more for community development, those are things I just feel like we need to schedule within a budget. Otherwise, right now, because our city is not self-sufficient, we're taking it from utilities. And that's all I want to say about that.
Counsel, any comments? Do you want to reserve them for tonight's budget, I mean, for tonight's agenda discussion? I just was kind of looking for something more concrete as to a pedestrian plan as well while they're talking. Same thing with the potential tunnel there. If we had somebody come in and could... if they could work together with this bike trail, I don't want the bike trail to have the blank canvas and then take the priority of the land and be the focal point when I think it's going to be used by relatively few people compared to what, you know, what other uses we're going to have for it. They just take the prime of the prop, you know what I'm saying?
Well, this is actually the first start of what, you know, of what we're going to do in order for planning. You can always get in and talk to them about the same thing or add that at a later date for walking pedestrian trails.
But if they go in there and they've got 70 acres to work with and they draw that trail where they want it, because there's nothing else on that canvas and they...
But they'll be aware that something else is going to be on that canvas.
They're going to take the prime land, guaranteed. That's one concern I have.
And that's what we got into last meeting was, well, we're better off to come up with the overall plan and then figure out where this fits in the middle of it.
Well, I'd be comfortable if Robert went to these people and said, "Look, you know, when you draw this bike trail, you know, you can't have every bit of it, say, along the creek where people might want to walk, or, you know, you can touch it, but, you know, it needs to be some stipulations."
I just think it would be better to tie it all in at the same time.
But I think Robert's point is, is that it's been sitting there for so long and nothing's happening, and I think... And I don't disagree, is that if we just keep kicking the ball down the road, when do we write a grant? What grant are we going to have? When would we have a grant?
I think we need to sit there and let the trees grow a little bit bigger. Let's just leave it alone.
I don't think you look at it that way. We don't spend money just because it's sitting there. I mean, you just put it in an overall plan with parks.
No.
And I think it's very positive. It just... The city is not making money right now, and that does have to be taken into account when we're trying to save the money for utilities for infrastructure upgrades.
Any other comments on... I support you on the trail. I just want to be cognizant that we need walking trails.
I absolutely do, too.
I'd like to move forward with walking trails as well.
We're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars for walking trails down at North Beach. I mean, there's plenty... They can walk down there. I mean, there's people walking now.
It's dangerous to walk down there right now at North Beach, and that's why we... The last ADCA funds we looked at were... That's also an existing park that can be enhanced, and it's used a lot more, and we're trying to do biking, not mountain biking, but cycling and pedestrian, making it more pedestrian-friendly.
If we were to vote on this tonight, Robert, I remember when we... when I first took office, we were asked to vote on the soccer complex and the layout of the fields. And when we first looked at it, I'm just giving you all this as an example, the council was not in favor of it exiting on Manly Road when we had a county highway there to exit on. So we actually changed the location of the parking lot. It was fairly substantial, and we felt like if we had been... if we'd been a part of that discussion earlier on, we wouldn't have spent a lot of money on planning for something that we wouldn't ultimately agree with. So if we could probably just, you know, have a man in a loop on this, too, Robert, as they're doing this, just to ask you to do that.
All right.
Because you know what other faults are out there if this is approved. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Committee updates? Jimmy?
I've got some. I think that I heard from some of my committee members, they feel like these are missed a lot during the work session, so I might go ahead and cover them, but I'm going to repeat the exact same thing in the council meeting for those that don't tune in until that time, just so that they're getting proper coverage, I guess. Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board met this past Friday afternoon, and the two key points... I was unable to attend the meeting, but the two points that they wanted me to bring up before the council were that they did have an opportunity to meet with Sean from Fairhope Docks and just to continue to press for the clean and resilient marina, and as, you know, we have anything come forward with that boatyard, they want to make sure that we continue to keep in mind that they'd like to have us as a clean and resilient marina and want to have that part of the lease agreements as we continue to develop that area, that people maintain their slips accordingly. And the other issue, they're having a... they're planning on having a special call meeting for February 22nd. That's... That'll be a week from Friday, and that meeting, they intend to discuss the urgent need for full-time technical staff to assist Richard Peterson with the various improvements that are being made to the infrastructure. And I know Richard replied to an email or replied to the minutes, and he had a pretty lengthy email, and I hadn't had a chance to review all of that, but I'm sure he... Richard, and I'm sure he could weigh in more as to what all he has in mind, and I know that that's something that the Environmental Advisory Board's going to cover Friday, that they're interested in supporting that. Historic Preservation Committee has a meeting Wednesday at 9:30 a.m. in the museum, and then the library is meeting Monday, February 18th at 3:00 p.m. That's a new time for the library board. They've been meeting at 5:00, and that time's being switched to 3:00 p.m., and I believe that is going to be the new meeting from here on out, time frame. That's it for now.
Robert?
Yeah, I will ask Ken Cole, the chairman of the Education Advisory Committee, to come up and give the update. I know you're aware, Jack, and Jimmy, I know you saw it on Facebook, that the EAC recommended that the council pass a resolution to move forward with the special tax district. The paperwork's still being drawn up by the county at this point, so we don't have a time when that will be presented for a vote by us to put it to the citizens to vote. But Ken, if you would, go ahead and...
Yeah, that pretty much sums it up. Thank you, Robert, and hello. Good afternoon. Good to see you.
I wish this was on the agenda.
Yeah. Hopefully, it will be one day soon.
Because, I mean, it wasn't on the agenda, and I did speak to, you know, some of the things I'm working on that I think we should bring to the forefront as well.
Yeah, well, this is the first step. You know, we're here, and we finally got the recommendation that you asked us to present to you. This follows on to the Acrobos study in 2015. The city administration at the time contracted with a consulting group called Acrobos, as at least a couple of you on the committee will remember. What we were looking for from that audit, that academic audit of our five Fairhope schools, was what do we have to do to move our school system into the top 10 statewide? And the results of that Acrobos study are there on the front page of your handout. And basically, what it says is, "Our lowest proficiency scores for reading and math. Highly competent teachers essential to the goal of advancing student academic achievement." They recommended we increase spending on classroom instruction and instructional support. That's key. They say one way you can do that is to create a special tax district that follows the borders of the Fairhope schools feeder pattern. So what this would do essentially is create a new tax base for the people living within the Fairhope schools feeder pattern. A three-mill increase that we are recommending would generate approximately $1.88 million per year that would flow to our five schools. As you're all well aware, the city has been contributing $350,000 per year to our school system, so equally allocated, that's $70,000 a year. The tax receipts from a special tax district would put $365,000 per school, not total, but per school, into the hands of our principals and teachers so they can direct those resources where they're needed most, and right now, that's in reading and math. If you look at the results on the second page of the impact of just the city contributions in the last couple of years, they're impressive. We're actually moving the needle. The teachers and principals are actually moving the needle in test scores specifically because of the money that the city has invested in these schools. They're hiring reading coaches, they're hiring math intervention coaches, they're tackling those two weakest study areas like a laser, and by focusing those resources into those two weak areas, they've improved all across the board. Read the... It won't take you two minutes to read the handout that I gave you, but it pretty well sums up what we believe is a strong case for giving the voters a chance in a special referendum to decide what types of schools they want for Fairhope. And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, how much work is needed to put a referendum together?
Well, what we're doing right now is waiting for the county to come back. They are putting their legal department on this, so the city doesn't have to. They're almost about 90% through with the documents they need. It's not going to be an easy task, and it's not going to be a popular vote, I think, in a lot of quarters. But I'm always reminded when I get on this subject of a Winston Churchill quote, and he said that politicians are concerned about the next election, statesmen are concerned about the next generation. I don't mean to exaggerate the importance of this decision for not only this council but for this city, but a successful referendum would probably have the most profound and lasting impact of anything that this elected body could do for generations of Fairhope kids to come. The principals have struggled, even with the $350,000 that the city provides. The weak point of that is something called soft money, and that simply means that the city's contribution cannot be used to hire tenured teachers. Well, that's a problem if you want the best and the brightest standing in front of your class, teaching our students. This money, because it would be taxed annually, provides permanence and definition that would enable the state to say, "Yes, this is a permanent source of funding, and yes, you can hire tenured teachers with this." And it's important to note that the funding that the schools receive now, federal, state, local, none of that changes. We still, for our five schools, get the same amount of money from the state, from the federal government, and from local sources. The only thing that would change is an additional $1.8 billion if we go to our five schools, and all of that money stays in Fairhope for Fairhope kids.
Counsel, I mean, you know, EAC's been talking about this for a long time. I just need to know, is there any reason that any of you... Oh, you don't have to give me the reason. Are any of you opposed to even holding a referendum or giving people a choice? I'll go first. I'm in favor of giving people a choice to decide for themselves. Anybody that's not in favor of that? Jimmy?
No, I'm in favor of giving the citizens a vote.
Before we go so far, that needs to be said.
Yeah. I think the documents that we're going to be getting from the school board are going to require more. I'm pretty sure, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, they stipulate that it's not just your support of giving the voters a chance to vote on it. You have to, as a council, as a city, actually support the three-mill tax increase.
Why is that? I don't know that I buy that.
I don't know that either.
I don't buy that at all. I hope you watch, and I don't buy that.
I don't know if that's true, no. I know they're requiring us to sign it.
Yeah.
We do not have to tell people how to vote.
No, no, they're telling you...
Right.
Not telling people how to vote.
We say to the board of education, we give our citizens the right to decide.
Right. Well, we'll know more when we get the documents.
And I just mentioned, timing-wise, that I still want to look into the information that I just found out about, just so all of this is being considered when we think about all the things we want to do for the school. And that's why I went to the last meeting this past week.
Whatever comes, we have to think of permanence and definition. We have to be able to hire tenured teachers, and the source of the funds is the determining factor in that. It has to be permanent.
Right. That makes sense.
And property taxes are more stable than sales taxes as far as your sourcing.
Absolutely. So we're just taking the Acrobos options that they provided, and after a year of due diligence, our committee has determined that of those five options, the special tax district gives the principals what they're looking for, what they need to increase spending on instruction and instructional support, professional development, substitute teachers to stand there in front of the class when the teachers are in professional development courses offsite. All of these things go into standing in front of a classroom with our kids and giving the very best opportunity for education that we can. We can't hire all the people that we want because we're bound by the equity funding formula that the state mandates, and we're a wealthy community, and we get less than less wealthy communities from the state. So our kids are working at a disadvantage.
And the principals are getting frustrated because they know the standards in which are required of them, and they're about maxed out with what they can do with what they have. Ask them.
They need more.
No, there's no question that we want to find more money. I just feel like I'm finding those funding sources that would be proportionately fair for the people who are involved in the schools, and it's just things that we should all think about, because we want... Whatever citizens decide to do, they just want to get a full picture, so it's a successful vote. That's just my two cents.
No disagreement here.
I appreciate the data that you've given us. Finally, we've seen some results that, you know, seeing some fruits of our... I don't say of our labors, because we're not doing the labor, but of our gifts.
You've always asked for accountability, which you should, and now we have the data to give evidence that what we are doing is working.
Ken, I know that the Board of Education is... Robert and I had this discussion on the radio this morning. I know that there's been discussions about feeder patterns changing in the county, especially in the eastern shore. And we don't want that to stall the election.
It shouldn't.
You'd wait forever to see results, but what happens if a group of people that were not in the feeder pattern all of a sudden become a part of the feeder pattern and they didn't have a say in yes or no for the Overlake District? That question needs to be answered.
Yeah, I'm probably out of my element there. Need to talk with the county that.
It might be one of those things where they're grandfathered in to continue going to where they were, or... I'm thinking, you know, percentage-wise, how many it'll be.
But as we grow, you know, as you get further and further from that election, and, you know, maybe the feeder pattern, and maybe not, because maybe there are just new schools built, but as if we reach out further and further, I don't know, we take in these additional residences, they could say, "Well, there wasn't even a house there, and they didn't have a vote, so now there's a house, and they do have a vote." So I don't know. Maybe it just doesn't matter.
It'll probably be spilt out in this paperwork we'll receive from the county. That's why I was taking some...
It's the first time it's been asked, probably.
Right.
No, but I think we're closer than we've ever been right now. We actually real... Have numbers now that we can bring you and feel confident that the jobs we've asked the teachers and the principals to do, they have done. They're doing their part. They need more help, and in a wealthy community like ours, we can't rely on the state to provide that help. If we want the schools to be as good as they can be, then the extra help is going to have to come from us.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Any other reports, Robert?
That's it.
Councilman Boone?
Actually, I have no reports.
Okay. I have, just to mention, we had an airport authority meeting just earlier today here in this room, and we had two items that were especially of note today, and that was the notice of the availability for leasing land for potential private hangars on the east side. I think we finally got the language. We've been working on that for several months, and so there will be a notice of availability sent out in the near future for those that want to lease a parcel of land and build a private hangar on it. And we should have more than enough parcels of land to go around this time. The second thing that we did was we selected our engineer of record again, and that was... That award went to Volker Engineering, and that was a very, very tough decision, I can tell you, from all of the airport authority members. There were five applicants, and they narrowed it down to three, and it was, I think, they described it, they recommended Volker, basically because they were incumbent and didn't see any reason why not to keep him. Of course, the other two were, you know, great, great companies. Other finalists were great companies as well, so Volker's engineer will be... Continue to be the engineer of record for the airport authority for the next five years, anyway. I think that's it for me. We'll move on to department heads. Jill? Or Lynn? Anything? Marina? Richard?
He's looking at the clock.
Do what?
Oh, Lord, he's looking at the clock. Don't tell him how long this is going to take.
Well, I saw on the agenda, it starts at 5:30 the council meeting, but normally it starts at 6:00. So do you have until 6:00?
No. This is department head updates. The work session ends at 5:30.
5:30? We're getting close. Anyway, yeah, I'll make it short. Y'all have any questions?
I mean, if you want to add on to what I brought up, and I got your email this morning regarding the environmental advisory board.
The environmental advisory board had called a special meeting to talk about some of the wastewater improvements, and from what I gathered, they were wanting to try to make some kind of recommendation. And we sat in the meeting at the library, and that was two weeks ago, and then one just passed Friday, and I shared with them what my thoughts were in terms of capital improvement. And so as a follow-up, so they wouldn't have to have another special meeting, but I'm assuming they'll have one anyway, they might just take the information that I gave them relative to the different projects that we were talking about and make a recommendation or not. I mean, you know, you can only talk about it so much, right? After a while, you got to fish your cut bait.
Do something or lay it down.
So anyway, that's not what I'm going to talk about. I met with the highway department, not with the highway department, but Amundson Blackman's a contractor on widening 181, and they're going to look at replacing our six-inch water main on 181, and they called and talked about whether or not we had planned to upgrade it. And we had talked about upgrading it back when it first started, and I don't know what happened with the plan set, but it never got incorporated in the plans to upgrade it and come up with the difference in cost from the six-inch that they would replace, because that's what their obligation is, versus us being able to contribute to pay to have that six-inch upgraded to a 12-inch water main. And we would want to do that. And we would want to do that because there's a water tank across from Walmart on Fairup Avenue, and there's a water tank that we're about to finish painting, you know, on the other side of 13, and there's a pretty good-sized transmission line, a 14-inch on Fairup Avenue, and we'd like to get as much capacity north as we can. And the cost difference looks to me like, without knowing the exact number of fittings, which is a difference in cost too, but it looks like for the 2,700 feet of six-inch, they're gonna spend about $45,000 to $50,000. And for the 2,700 foot of 12-inch, based on the prices in the contract, it would be about $105,000 to $110,000, which would put us paying for the upgrade of about $60,000. And I think it's worth doing, and I think we should plan on having that 12-inch line, you know, extended down 181 again when they make their next improvement there, or if we have, you know, an opportunity to do it prior to that, that too. But right now, I think that's the first phase of trying to get that 12-inch line coming down 181 like what I think it would need to be. So, I didn't commit to it today, but I told them I would mention it to y'all this afternoon, and if everybody feels like that's the way we want to proceed, I would let them know because otherwise, they were gonna have pipe delivered tomorrow morning. And so, don't deliver six-inch pipe tomorrow morning, let's wait until we give, you know, at least a consensus of how we want to proceed.
Richard, and then, let's take that a step further. You say you go from six-inch to 12-inch.
Yes.
Are we gonna need in 20 years, are we gonna need a 14-inch line there?
Well, what we would probably be looking at is a production facility that would be north of 104, whether it be on 13 or 181, I don't know.
Actually, I don't know if we have enough production to fill, if we have enough production to fill the 12-inch line.
Yeah, well, production is a function of demand, and we'll have, demand will be growing. I think the 12-inch line gives us plenty of capacity along that corridor for the development and everything that feeds off of it.
Our wells can supply all that?
Well, a well will be able to supply it when it needs to be supplied, yes. I mean, you know, finding the next water production facility, based on the hydraulics of what I understand, or issue some at the hospital during, and we didn't have one this past summer, thank goodness, but during dry conditions, we have a big irrigation demand that runs north, and Rock Creek is a good example of where that takes place, and that booster station robs some of the pressure in town, and the hospital seems to suffer with low pressure on the fourth floor. And coincidentally enough, we were talking to Dan O'Donnell, the geologist, about production facilities, and we were talking about different, like, out on, near Boone Lane on 33. But we also looked at the well we were gonna abandon that's behind the fire station at Ingleside. And we were looking at the drilling logs of that well, and they tapped with the screen of that well, the deepest aquifer, and we wound up having to abandon that because of iron content. But there's another aquifer that's a little higher than that, that we also tap off the wells that are over on the Fairup Avenue site behind Intermediate School. And we were thinking if we could put a new production facility behind the hospital, we'd eliminate all the needs of the hospital with low pressure from that production facility. And we think it feeds the Nichols Tank, and we think it'll feed the Fairup Avenue Tank and feed north, too. So, what I would like to do is look at the property. There's two blocks behind the fire station that I think we should try to look at in terms of purchasing for a water production facility there and maybe offset some of the longer-term needs we're gonna have for transmission if we start developing that well field on Boone Lane, or if we start going north, we're still gonna have to have some type of transmission capability to get any other production facility back into town.
Could you put a production facility at the location of the substation that we're gonna relocate if we buy this land tonight? We're gonna move that substation across the street.
That's a small lot for a production facility. We can look at it.
I didn't know if it would fit, that we already have that land. It won't be used.
But it would, it's a possibility.
It's kind of close, but where's the argument?
Absolutely. And we can, we can look at that.
That's all. So, $60,000, and how soon do you need an answer on this? Like, tonight, would we need to?
I don't need an answer. I don't even know what the exact number is right now, but I guess the ballpark number's gonna be about $60,000, and it's gonna put about a half a mile of 12-inch water main from 104 south that won't quite get to Mosley Road, and it'll be the first step of improving that capacity of the water system in that area.
I could tell you, in the past, the city's been very reluctant in upgrading lines that were going in for some reason or other, and it always cost them more money because they eventually needed it. And to me, this is a terrific idea as far as going forward and upgrading a line while the work's being done, and you're getting basically a percentage off to have it, and they're already messing it up, so it's a one-time deal.
I think it's the right idea.
So, I think, personally, I think it's, you know, it's absolutely, we need to upgrade.
You need four times the volume.
Right.
Exactly four times the volume.
And an offset on our cost.
And an offset on our cost to do it after the road is finished yet.
True, too.
Does that...
I would be in favor of it.
I'll get exact numbers.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
To me, it's not even a question, but that's my opinion.
Any others have any questions about that, comments? Would you support that? Jimmy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
While you're here, so we will jump into that because it is 5:30, and we'll jump into the agenda meeting. A question on item 23 about the SCADA system for the 12 lift stations. Again, I'm getting conflicting stories. The, when you were here last week in council meeting, you said that we needed to upgrade the SCADA systems that were on our lift stations, correct?
May I approach?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
I have some material that I promised everybody I'd bring to them. Councilman Boone, I want to make sure you understand that I heard exactly what you said about the newest greatest challenge.
Till next week.
I'm not asking that. I would never do that to you. What we have right now is we have a lack of comm between some of the lift stations, a majority of the lift stations, and what we're trying to do is eliminate that. I didn't make enough copies. I was, had to go to the doctor at the last minute today. But if you could pass this around, this is atypical of what we have now. The red shows no comm. That means I'm not getting any alarms.
Communication.
Communications, and that's part of the biggest issue we have.
Good, bad, and different, you're not getting anything.
No, I'm not getting anything. Now, I'm not blaming Surveillance for this at all. The good news is, is for free, I have an engineer coming in from Troy to help us figure out what the problem is. And then, he's not coming to fix our problem. He's coming to help us evaluate it because we don't have anybody right now on staff who's capable of evaluating exactly what our issue is with it. In the meantime, I'm asking you to spend $35,800 or whatever it is because we can use those, they're separate systems, we can use those on our lift stations that are giving us the most problems, and I'm not gonna waste your money. What I'm gonna do is, is if we can fix Surveillance, I'm gonna move those to the water because all the water wells also need them. So, we're gonna spend the money either way. And, but this fixes our problem right away, and we also have an agreement with the vendor for Mission to come in and fix anything that we have. And they also have dedicated cell phone lines that they don't have. I talked to Jeff today, and he said, the two main problems we have, number one thing is Surveillance doesn't have a dedicated phone system, and they need fiber. And that's why it works for electric so well, because all the alarms and systems for, the electric system is on fiber. But we don't have that opportunity with this. We're too strung out with the lift stations. I don't know what it would cost, but I assume the cost would be pretty astronomical. If we went from the one at Long Pines, which is on Long Pine subdivision, that fiber would have to run back into town, would have to run to Quell Creek, and that's just one of the 60.
So, let me back up here.
Sure.
Some more fundamental questions I had about this. I had a person tell me that they were told that we didn't have any SCADA systems on these lift stations at all.
I think you...
And I said, that is not the way I understand it.
No, and I cleared that up at the environmental advisory board. I was very clear about that. We have one, and this shows it right here.
Right. But they're not communicating.
They're not communicating.
And have they always not been communicating, or is this more a recent development?
There've been problems, and we knew there were problems right away. Now, I didn't...
And we're not trying to pick on or blame, we're just trying to understand the problem.
I agree, because I'm not asking you to spend pennies here. I understand it. So, I think I should have to answer for this. I don't know exactly, pretty soon into the equation, we were having problems, right? And some of it was resolved, and some of it we thought we could resolve, and we were trying different fixes. And those fixes have not worked out. Now, what Jeff's done recently, he's put some antennas out on the pier and stuff, and that's fixed the problem, but I don't know, and it's a directional antenna, and I don't know that it's gonna fix a majority of the problems. It won't fix the ones that I need to have fixed pretty rapidly. I think we all realize that there's, the biggest problem we have in wastewater is detention time. You know, if I get a page to the doghouse that says I have high water, and I actually have high water, I have about 45 minutes before we have an SSO. And it's imperative, if that call comes in at 3 o'clock in the morning, that I have that 45 minutes, and I don't have that now. As a matter of fact, that SSO that's directly related to the doghouse was caught in by a customer that drove by, and we got our first page when we were there, and it was running up. And by that time, the whole thing is full. The whole system is full.
So, when you say it's not communicating, is it not communicating where all the red is?
Right.
Those lift stations, they're not communicating anything? They're not communicating...
Right. They're not saying, when you see the red...
Are you getting a ton of emails from where it's...
Right, and that was the other thing that happened. But again, I'm not blaming Surveillance. We won't know the actual cause of this until I get somebody down here who is capable of telling us exactly what the problem is. But they're not coming, I'm gonna be perfectly clear about it. They're not coming to fix it.
Are all the red, is all that red gonna be black if we spend this money?
No. The 12 lift stations I put it on will not be on this anymore. They'll be on a separate system. But all of these will not be fixed. What you see red now will probably still be red until I get somebody who can tell me exactly how to fix it. All I'm trying to do is stop the bleeding.
I understand.
And again, I want everybody to understand that that money won't go to waste because I have 10 lift, I have 10 water wells that also need some type of SCADA system on them. And if I get Surveillance fixed, I'll be more than happy to migrate those over. There's no reason I couldn't, right? But these have a dedicated cell phone system, and I have these have the least amount of detention time that I've got to get alarms now.
So, when I talk to the citizens, I can say, we have SCADA. It's not operating properly.
You can send it to my office, I'll show it to them. And I'm showing you. This is, this is every SCADA system we have. Everything has SCADA system that the city currently owns. Now, there's two that we don't own yet because they haven't been to sign over to us, and I don't answer for those. They will when we sign them over. They certainly will when we sign them over. And the costs on these are, I wouldn't say identical, these are a little bit more on the front end than Surveillance is, but, you know, overall, they're about the same. We have to build a bracket. These are self-contained, and so I just want to make sure that you understand that I am cognizant of the fact that I'm asking you to spend $35,000 and some change.
That's not as big a deal. I was concerned when someone from the EAB told me that they heard that there was no SCADA on any lift station. I thought...
At that time, I think that...
I think that we have SCADA on every lift station.
We do, and I promise you that. And I will physically show you that if I need to, but I made that clear at that meeting you were at, did I not?
I think, I think you explained, I think there still may have been some confusion. So, SCADA's on all the lift stations.
Absolutely.
One of the questions where I might be even a little confused, are you receiving on the ones that are here in red, you not receiving the alarm, but are you receiving an email notification?
No. What happens is, and that's a good point, what happens is, is as these come back up, then I may get a dump, and I may not. But there's not a lot of storage right now, and that's one of the things, there's a bunch of things that he's gonna show us when he gets here, hopefully, that we'll be able to fix. For instance, if Mission goes offline, which is the one I'm asking to purchase, just for these 10, I got them in two, there'll be a total of 12. They have memory in them, so if they go offline, if they lose power, they'll sit there and they'll collect that data, and then they'll tell us when they went high water, which helps me help resolve the issue. I don't currently have that, but as these come up and as the power surges on and off, I'm not able to control these well enough to work through them, so I may get 80 or 90 pages that I don't need, and I'm not able to prioritize that. Now, I think that he will show me a way to fix that. I don't have a SCADA person, we don't have a SCADA person who's adept at this, and I'm gonna have to learn on the fly, and I hope to learn as much as possible when he's here. Eventually, we'll have to have somebody who's adept at this if we stay with Surveillance. The difference is, if we're with Mission, and we're not, but if we went with Mission, I wouldn't need anybody because they work on everything. They fix it, it's on a website, and, you know, they tell us exactly what's wrong, and they tell us what's going on, and they troubleshoot it theirself. That's not gonna be the case right now with Surveillance.
Jay, I've asked this question once before, a couple of years ago, when we had the spill at the Woodlands Lift Station.
Right.
And it lost power, so it couldn't communicate, say that they were having a trouble signal. But do we not have a trouble signal for when, like I was saying, well, if that thing's ping and saying, "All clear, all clear," well, it ought to, you ought to get a signal on that system that says, "We're not getting a signal from there anymore, so check it out."
Right. So, what happened was, and that's a perfect example, what happened was, is we lost communication on a Friday. Everybody had already gone home, and there was no signal that said we'd lost communication because these come up all the time. And so, we just lost communication. We happened to come in Monday morning, and we were like, oh, you know, crud, we don't have communications, and that's one of our major lift stations, we were running right down there.
Well, the cause of communication fail happened to be a fuse that ran both the communication circuit for the SCADA and the control circuit for the lift station. So, when the fuse blew and lost communication, it wasn't gonna turn up.
But that I'm saying, that in itself, the fact that you're getting no signal telling you, basically, you know, every 20 minutes, it gives you an "all clear," and if you don't get that "all clear," you know there's a problem.
Like I said...
We've addressed the...
Yeah, we've got two separate circuits now.
All of the stations are correct on that.
Tried to raise the antenna to break communication.
But it's like your kid calling you. They don't call you, something must be wrong. I mean, if that thing's not calling in, saying everything's all right...
I see my mom always said, "No news is good news."
Yeah, well, I don't know.
That's what my dad said, too.
All right, so, in answer to your question, I'm sorry, in answer to your question, no, I don't have a way, that's one of the questions I will be asking when it gets here.
Yeah, I just like to ask the question.
And because that's, you know, if I said, what we wanted to do, and what we hoped to do with this, was to set aside 12 major lift stations and be able to turn off all alarms for other stations during a major rain event, because the first 12 are the most important, and I can manage the rest manually if I need to, but the first 12, you know, and we're talking about the Woodlands, and we're talking about Twin Beach, and we're talking about Grand Hotel, South Sixth Street, North Sixth Street, so on and so forth, all our ones that are the major ones, handle multiple lift stations and have very little detention time. We will put those in a priority by theirself, and that's what he's gonna show me. That way, I don't have to listen, if I get, you know, we get 80 pages, I have to scroll through them just to see which ones are Woodlands. I can't eliminate them and get right down to the Woodlands, or I can't eliminate it to see what my big ones are doing. And that's one of the things he will do. And then, in that case, you know, if we lost a comm, at least I would, I would hope that it would, I'm gonna figure it out, so we'd alarm, say I lost a comm, and those 12, I know I need to go look at right away. I can't do that now. So, hopefully, when he gets here, we'll be able to do it. I'm not giving up on Surveillance in any way, shape, or form. I don't think that we've done enough, but I need to do something now, and that's why I'm asking for the money now to try to get this, you know, and again, I can reuse these at a later date if I need to migrate those, but it's not the latest greatest. It's been around just like it is for a while.
Well, again, I'm not looking for the latest to greatest. I'm just looking for a system that I don't, that we don't come back to a year from now saying, something, we didn't see this in the profiles or whatever, in the work.
I won't do that.
And now, all of a sudden, if we add another $35,000, we could just make it a whole lot better.
I won't do that. I won't do that. I promise you.
I'm looking for something, you know, whatever we pay for, let's let it work for, you know, a long time.
Right. And I appreciate that sentiment. And I promise you, I've researched this over the last two months until I'm going blind.
Well, as wastewater systems go, the Mission system's tried and through. And there's several neighboring utilities that have that, Baldwin County Sewer being one of them. Orange Beach and Gulf Stores have those. I mean, it's pretty reliable.
Is there anything else you'd like me to answer? All right. Can we talk about the UV or do you have time? Or do you want to talk about the UV?
Let's talk about the UV.
It's one of your agenda items. There was electrical glitch. I wanted, the only thing I wanted to point out is the comm boards are out currently. The comm boards are out.
Number 22, Council.
The comm boards are out. From the electrical glitch, there was a, we had, there was a big short out at the UV system. And that $15,000 will allow us to put some comm boards back in so we can start communicating. My point is, is this, is that may be the, that may be the end money, but that may not be the end money. We won't know until, the way the system works is for us to properly troubleshoot it, it has to communicate with us. It's not communicated. So, once we get it communicated, there may be other problems. I just wanted you to be aware of it. So, if I have to come back and ask for money, I didn't want, you know, I want to be honest with you.
Did you divert the flow to the other unit?
Right. And that was another problem. Plus the fact, absolutely. And plus the fact.
So, we have redundant UV treatments at the sewer plant.
Right. And so, what we also can do is, we manually, we can, went up there, we just turned it on. You know, it's almost running at what you would consider 100%. But we can't turn it up and we can't turn it down. And these bulbs are UV bulbs, just like you see, some like you see in the tanning bed. I know none of you go to the tanning bed. But anyway, I wondered about it. But anyway, the problem is, is running them at that percentage, the life of it goes way down. You know, and so, there needs, we need to be able to move them up and down in brightness. And so, that, so I'm just trying to make everybody aware that that $15,000, hopefully, will get us to, you know, it should get us to where we can communicate and see if we need to troubleshoot more, if that fixes it. But I don't have any idea until we get beyond that.
And if you're in a mood to give us a blank check, we'll fill out the amount when we find out what that cost is.
And is there any questions on that? I just wanted to be honest about it.
Borrow money from the utilities. We need utilities.
And last, and last but not least, the lesson of the contract for this thing that's gone on for like 10 years, it's not 10 years, it feels like in my lifetime, about the clamp. I wanted to talk about that real briefly. You know, we went back and forth if we even needed it on the agenda because we, we looked at it and we looked, and I personally went on some websites because I don't want to bother you with it because all we're doing is decreasing the amount we're asking for. And my point to all of you is, is I, is, I don't, I don't know if we even needed to bother you with it because according to the state, if we had a one bidder, which we did, and we weren't, you know, we weren't affecting his profit margin because he had no profit margin on the clamp that we originally had and we weren't changing the scope of work. We were just lessening because Richard and I looked at a bunch of different scenarios. Went with this clamp, which is not $32,000, it's $3,800. I just didn't think we needed to come forward with that. But it's there now. And I just thought that we, I felt like we may be, you know, wasting your time already with 28 items on there. And so, I almost, you know, thought that, I just didn't see a need to put it on there. But it's on there now.
This is item 24, right?
That's the only reason it's on here. It's an amendment to the contract.
Right. But it doesn't change the scope of the contract. And it doesn't, it actually decreases the value of the contract.
We just didn't, I mean.
Which I think is the purpose of having y'all approve these contracts, the scope and the value. And anything less than that, I think is, I mean.
But if you don't amend it, they actually, you have authorization to spend $53,900. So, this kind of limits.
Well, he did it. I just want to say this. He did amend it and he sent it to the mayor to have it signed and notarized.
Amendment to change order, the same thing as an amendment? Is that?
Similar.
Yep. Is that, is that a local ordinance or is that a state ordinance?
State.
What is that, Lieutenant?
I'm new to the city administration and bureaucracy of contract administration.
Well, we were, we were, we did look at it from your standpoint, from everybody's standpoint. Again, we're not trying to circumvent anything. We just don't want to waste you guys' time. You're busy enough.
That'll take about one minute.
Okay.
It'll take more time than we've talked about it right now, or less time.
All right. Do you have any questions on it? Because.
But it's held a job up for about three weeks now. It's more pressing issue to me because it's just time on our plate that we don't have.
All right.
Well, you know, when we had a meeting two weeks ago and then, like I said, I would just, you know, call me or call the council and do a straw poll and say, "We're going to vote on it after the fact." It's when we're decreasing money. That's the way to handle it.
Okay, that's great.
Proper way to handle it is to still vote on it.
So, we could, we could call you for a straw vote and if you were going to say, we could have gone ahead.
It's just a non-binding, but I mean, I don't think council members are going to change their mind on something that they're decreasing spending by $30,000.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on the clamp? Does anybody have any questions on the clamp that we're going to use?
Yes.
Any questions about the work with the, okay. All right. We're going to turn it, as soon as you vote on it tonight, we're going to turn it over to Blue Sal which can get this off our air. And then, and again, if the citizens ask, we're not done pursuing the bay. But there is a leak coming out where it shouldn't come out. We're not at 7,000 feet. We're at 4,000 feet. But not all of it's gone. And we'll notify item immediately as soon as the repair is done. All right?
Yep.
Anything else? I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Jay.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Any other department heads have anything pressing? Electrical. Chief, do you have anything? Mr. Johnson, are you going to talk about accepting of public utilities if we need to in the meeting, kind of going through the agenda?
I can. And I do want to at least quickly address item number 17.
Okay. That's Wayne.
And even I get caught surprised. So, I had to make sure I understood this. I want to make sure you do as well. First of all, we're not spending $91,000 on cans and bins. But let me kind of break down what's included in this agenda item. Right now, we are predicting that we need nearly 600 new garbage carts this year. Where does that number come from? We are adding about 30 new residential customers, business customers a month. That's 360 that we're projecting for this year. And we have about a 3% replacement loss. Meaning, some people who move take their cart with them. So, when somebody moves into the house, we have to take them or the cart gets damaged or destroyed. So, that's about 585. So, that's, as you saw in Dale's email in there, that's three orders of 200, which total about $34,518 for the garbage carts. He's also proposing three orders of lids at 200 a set. We do go out and repair garbage carts when the lids get tore up. That is the one failure part on that. Those lids are $17.19 a piece when you add all the parts that go with them. So, that's potentially $10,314. And then, we're proposing three orders of bins of 600 each. So, $1,800 total at $8.04 a piece at 484 shipping handling for each order, which comes to about $14,472. So, we're predicting the maximum we're going to spend is $60,756.80. So, but since the not to exceed was in the budget of 91, that's where that number comes from. And again, we don't do a next order until our inventory gets to a certain level because you'd ask the question, "Why not order everything at once?" We don't have enough room to store all that at once. So.
I want to mention too that we went over in the budget that we wanted to start charging a fee for the cost of the can and then giving away the recycled bins. Because we want to promote people recycling and giving them, everybody recycling and explaining what we do with these would help with the recycling. But I do think we charge a fee for the trash service. It's just the cost of the can.
Absolutely. And this is the expense side of that.
How much is a can?
The cans are $53.53 a piece if we order a minimum order, which I think was that 200 that you saw there. And you do have that total quote in there. So, let's see, let me see what was the minimum on the toters.
We just don't charge enough in the monthly pickup.
The minimum order to get that price is 120, but we just broke it into orders of 200. So. And, you know, that's just the cost of doing business and we're a growing community. And so, the carts are new customers plus just loss of 3% loss is what we figured, which is about 225 annual based on 7,500 customers. So, I just wanted to explain because that, that's a big number right there. But I wanted you to see the parts of it and answer any questions about that.
Is there anything to suggest that given these recycling bins helps people recycle more? I mean, I take myself, for example, I've just, I've got a couple of bins. Actually, I have one bin and I use it. And then, I have a big plastic tote with rope handles because it holds a lot. And my recycling has gotten about to be about as much or more than my household garbage. So, I have a big bin and it's cheap. I mean, they're, I don't know what I pay for.
And this is expensive too.
Five or six bucks. But if people went out and just got their own bin like that, I mean, is that prohibitive to recycling or?
And, and, and our.
Because some people may not recycle because they don't think they have the right bin.
That's correct. I think what we're trying to do with this, this, since we haven't done it in a long time, is as we add new customers, the outreach that we're going is, "Here's your garbage cart and here's what goes in it and this is what day it goes out. Here's your recycled bins and this is what goes in it and this is what day it goes out." We failed to mention that recycling is optional. We kind of present it as that this is what you do as part of our overall program. And we think that's a real effective way of setting the stage for especially new customers to develop that habit. You know, the reality of it is, is that if, if, if we could move our penetration recycling up from the 35, 40% participation that we have to a 50%, that's a real savings for us because that's reducing that $30 a ton in the landfill and all that operation related to the transfer station and such.